All right, and if one hour has not arrived, we welcome you to the presence of the floor. I'll call this meeting with the highest due attention and all the members of the council in favor of the statement of the president and the vice chairman of the council. And we're going to start with the convention to be led by Councilman Lawrence. Our flag is lit, it's lit by the United States of America and through the Republic, which is saying, "One nation, under our own judicial, without the particularities of law." And yes, sir. Yes, sir. Okay, I thought I got, uh, we can, uh, thank you for your mercy and your grace. Uh, we thanking you for blessing us with entertainment, uh, the council, uh, the staff, et cetera, and, uh, thank you for helping us get through this pandemic. And I know for myself, what I was going through, that, uh, you are good God, and, uh, you brought me through, and hopefully everything will be okay. Now, don't thank you for helping us with the families and the clients, for what's going on, but I, I know with your help that we can, uh, override everything and, uh, we could, uh, we would be okay. Uh, I really appreciate that, yes, sir. Thank you so much, and your name is great. Amen and amen. And please keep saying, "Thank you for all those who are in this meeting, for the reference of what all members of the council are urging, and what's been in question." And next time on the agenda, the approval of this agenda, I'm wearing a bunch of things that need to be made, and I'm hoping to approve this agenda yesterday. So, like that. Motion by Councilman Dodd, second to my counsel view, in any additions, additions, corrections, or otherwise to the agenda. Here now, I call a question, all in favor of approval of this agenda. As the record reflect, all members of the council are in the affirmative, the agenda is approved. Next time on the agenda, the approval of this, from the February 15, 2021 council meeting, should have been provided by the property website. And advance, is there a motion to approve this? Motion by Councilman Few, second to my counsel, in discussion, addition, deletion, correction, or addition. Here now, I call a question, all in favor of approval of this. Motion, Karen, you have it, it's on the floor. Next time on the agenda, the public hearing for a zoning variance application request of QuickTrip Corporation in the first.
Mayor, while he's looking for that, Judy Alley with QuickTrip is zoomed in.
Okay, welcome, Judy, thank you for doing this.
Thank you, Natalie.
All right, we'll wait until the turn.
This is a public hearing to consider the application of QT Corporation, uh, for a variance on the property that's designated as Monroe County Tax Parcell 054008B, and it's located at the intersection of Harold Clark Parkway, Highway 18, and Patrol Road in Forsyth. What the variant seeks is allowance for sign variance, for an illuminated sign, pole sign, and monument sign, and a corridor overlay, uh, and things related to that. The current zoning is highway business, and the zoning is not, not to be changed, it's just a variance in that zoning district. Uh, the public hearing was advertised in the issues of the reporter of February 10, 17, and 24 for tonight. This has been to planning and zoning, and at the January 25 P&amp;Z meeting, they recommended approval of variance. So it comes to you for the city council, uh, city, uh, public hearing and the councils' of consideration.
All right, and so if their time has not arrived, we'll open the floor for the hearing. The public hearing on this matter is now open, and I'm going to give approval here from the zoning officer, but first, is there anyone in the audience here to speak in favor of the proposed variance request? Is there anyone, um, someone, Judy here? Is there anyone in the audience here to speak against this proposed, uh, zoning variance request? All right, representing those at this time, we'll hear from the zoning officer, Mr. Pearson.
Uh, and it's out, they have all paperwork, uh, that you sent, uh, for, uh, what you're requesting, the, um, sign variance, and also, um, parking variance, um, in the corridor overlay, nothing is allowed as far as signs, only that is allowed is wall mounted signs and canopies, which you could put, so, um, pretty much you have to ask for variance for anything to be placed in corridor overlay, even though it may be interstate accessible. Um, so, um, we have discussed this in the, uh, in some, even that they feel the need to, um, have the restrictions sustained in corridor overlay in those interstate areas. Um, they, they do continue to approve, um, the variances for the monuments and the, um, signs, and they didn't really need to approve this one. Um, I did verify, make sure that the distance was appropriate from the other, um, interstate signs, and so what they're asking, yes, as far as the sign is sizing, that would be in highway business other than 125 feet, they're requesting for the interstate sign.
Okay, thank you. All right. Where was the parking? Where was the variance in parking? I mean, I, I only see one flat, I don't, I haven't seen the, is that the one that includes the parking variance? We can just tell them where it is, it's kind of pointed, it's working.
Um, it's on an application, but I think that it is not, it is not fully cleared.
I mean, basically, is it, is it, uh?
Um, they proposed an 85, um, the minimum is 59, they're asking for an 85. But then, 73 hundred square foot building, which, um, we can still redo the request for the parking, and I didn't, I didn't know, so it was not on the variance request.
I advertise that as a related matter to this whole thing, part, part parcel of what, uh, brought through the council.
All right, all right, we're still in the public hearing portion of the meeting. Anyone from the public wishing to come forward, either for or against, or just to express an opinion related to that, and they do so at this time, the floor is open.
This is Judy, that's that, and I'm just here to answer any sort of questions or concerns you guys might have, and this to provide you a little bit of clarification on that parking. That's a future proposed parking, um, it's not needed at this time, but we will, we'll have to come back through, um, planning and zoning after we're open, um, so if it needs to come back again, we can separate it, it's no problem.
What is your plan with opening today?
Um, that all depends on what we can get the permit, we're rocking and rolling, uh, we've got probably six, eight months of construction, and we've got a couple utility relocations out there, but I'm hoping October, November is what we're tracking.
All right, anything else from the public related to this matter? All right, here we go, at this time, we consider the public hearing portion of the meeting closed, the public hearing is closed, and as a council's consideration, are there any motions for change? I move the variance to be approved, and, and I would go ahead and add the parking, uh, to it. I mean, I don't have a problem, they have plenty of land to put it. All right, we have a motion by Councilman Dodd, second to my counsel, Stroud. Is there any other discussion or question? Councilman Dodd, when you finish, I hope you can get this in. I was, I was just gonna make a comment to go ahead and include that rather than making this separate, because they do have plenty of land, I just didn't know where it was. It's a understanding, Councilman Stroud, if you're seconding both variances, the one for the sign and the one for the parking lot, and it is new. All right.
That, I'll pull the other thing, I just want to get it out there, instead of getting this discussion, I want to make sure that we had a, uh, motion in the second before we had this discussion, that was all I wanted.
All right, thank you. All right, any other discussion, or does anybody have any questions from this house? I'm just hoping to line with it. All right. Tell us about the sign, again, Bob. Or, or, man, somebody.
The sign?
Tell me, tell us about the sign, again.
Why? No, no, they're wanting the signs, no pole signs, no interstate signs allowed in corridor overlay, so they're pretty much asking for permissions to any type of signage other than what goes on the building, that's, and, and if you were to put it on a canopy, that's allowed, but pretty much nothing else can be placed on the parcel, in the corridor overlay, you have to have permission for it. So they're asking for permission for a monument sign, um, the interstate sign, and a pole sign.
This is all we can do.
The only height variation is 125 feet for the interstate sign, they pretty, they meet standards for those signs.
Compared to the, the signs that were later, what, what did, uh, compare?
Um, it's a care of order, I said, other than 125 feet request for the interstate. But, um, I'm not sure if we were looking on more to the, to have the, on this place, they got, I mean, of the, of the, all, but, you know, there's somewhere to play the hall sign.
All right, and maybe the proof you have is reflected in the council. All right, any other discussion from the council? Here we go, I call a question, all in favor. Record, collect, and let me pass this announcement, it's on the floor. Next time on this agenda, is, uh, a public hearing for a zoning variance application request of Dustin Cruz on behalf of Cabbins Road LLC.
I'm kind of advertising to you, bear with me just a second, please. This comes to you tonight, uh, for a public hearing, Dustin Cruz has made an application on behalf of Cabbins Road LLC for a variance on the property designated as Monroe County Tax Parcell F-33018, that's located at 448 Cabbins Road in Forsyth. The variant seeks a sign variance for, in the internally illuminated sign in the corridor overlay district, for a coming, uh, chain's rib shack to be located in that development. The current zoning is, uh, highway business, and there's no change in the zoning being asked for here, only a variance in the zoning district. The, uh, issue went before planning and zoning on January 25, and then planning and zoning recommended approval of the variance. It, uh, notice has been published in the issues of the Monroe County Reporter, February 10, 17, and 24, and so it's here for the public hearing and the council's consideration.
All right, thank you, Mr. Melton, so at this time, the public hearing is open, and now open the floor for the public hearing, on this matter. Are there any in the audience here to speak for the proposed variance request? Are there any in the audience, any others to speak in favor? Are there any in the audience to speak against the proposed variance request? All right, we'll hear from the zoning officer, and then we'll, uh, put that.
Yeah, this is kind of the same case, this is the QuickTrip, um, the one that they did allow, it's just, um, regular advertisement, um, as far as the wording, internally illuminated, it's not allowed in corridor overlay, so, um, but, like I said, um, I think coming forward, you did, um, all of it. And we have, like I said, we have discussed many changes in the corridor overlay, but we still have to, uh, review every time that comes through, other than that town, for its center development, that's, um, up to Florida, from the memorial side, and we need to, that will be off again.
All right, Mr. Cruz, yeah, just, yeah, okay, any questions, I can hear you answering the questions, or if it's just not, so. Okay, I keep feeling with us this evening, anybody in the audience, anybody else that wants to speak either for or against the proposed variance, now, now, this time. You want to? This sign is going to be on the bill, place and thing through.
Yeah, so that'll be one, so it'll promise park due versus, it'll be a road, or a park duty, and about a constable's time, and a road, and, 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 it's a, it's a, that's places, the, 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 the.
Sign actually, based towards the interstate, or whether?
Yeah, yeah, since it'll get the traffic coming from the, uh, the city, yeah, the other will be on the slide, you know, but I care what's, uh, what's.
The first two minutes in that, I think, I think it's six?
Uh, yes, yes, I'm sure.
And you got the first two, most of it. All right, yeah, for any other, any other, uh, participation, the public here. Anyone else who can speak for, against, the proposed variance, now, now, do so, being held in favor, and this time, we consider the public hearing closed, public hearing on this matter now closed, as a council's consideration, and if others would be able to take this down. I move the variance to approve. Motion by Councilman Dodd, second to my counsel, view, to approve the variance and answer questions. Uh, any discussion or questions from the council, we're talking this night, and Mr. Cruz is here to answer questions. Yes, Mr. Stroud?
Hey, Mr. Cruz, good evening. Hey, um, what considerations have been put into place, um, to protect Mr. Overtree? I know that the Ralph Overtree's property sits right next, right next door, um, well, any signs, like the lights, the signs, you know, my concern is, I mean, he's elderly, and so the old citizens, um, and councilmen of the city of Forsyth, and that's the one to make sure that they're, we take care of end of this property, so when he's trying to rent, the lightning itself is not, um, penetrating through his home. Um, have, have those considerations been looked into?
In terms of, uh, yeah, our, our lighting goes off at, at 10 o'clock, so it's set with timer, goes off 10, it comes off, it comes on, and, uh, it does, so it'll, um, so, you know, that's in terms of bothering, you know, in the face of the light of this property, I believe, into the parking lot, and, uh, that's a great one to worry about.
Okay, thank you very much, that's all the questions I have, thank you.
All right, uh, Councilman Howard?
Yeah, in reference to what Captain Stroud was talking about, now, I don't know the, uh, I don't know any details about this, but I do remember having a conversation, Mr. Overtree as well, and he wasn't happy at one time, he said his bushes happened, I guess he'd been cleaning off the property, his bushes had to be cut down, and he was gonna have a discussion with, uh, with, with company about it, I don't know the details, but I'm glad to ask that question on, Captain Stroud, because I know he wasn't happy with the task, uh, so, you know, I was just, and, and, you know, I'm hoping that they're doing all they can to keep him happy over there, and make sure they're not, you know, actually going too far on his property and everything, because I know he wasn't happy about that, but that was a few months back, and it told me that I never got back to it again, all that.
Yeah, and I, and I know, represent the landlord of the building, the building, or what this building out is, place.
You represent the community.
Correct, yes, okay.
But Mr. Cruz doesn't represent the property owner, he only represents community, uh, this guy. All right. Uh, I think your duty is, uh, probably.
Yeah, I, I'm just, I'm just making notes that, I do, I get it, though, I mean, I, I know they wouldn't, you know, want to put that out there, been, Councilman Stroud, they brought that up, I'm just adding that on to it, but, you know.
It's right in his yard, right? And, uh, this is all pretty yard.
Hey, Mr. Barrett, hey, is it possible, I, I totally understand, Mr. Cruz represents, uh, St. Brilstein, but is it possible that we, the council, uh, let's all could reach out to, um, whoever the overall property owner is, just to make sure, like I said, that this Overtree is, is like a icon in this community, and I want to make sure, especially this golden year, that, that we're making sure that he's a customer, he can, and we can all coexist in that area, um, if we can make sure that happens, that, that will be the world to be, I know they're in the supporters with.
Yes, sir, I had already made myself a note to check on that tomorrow.
All right, any other questions? Any other questions or comments? Here now, I call a question, all in favor of approval of variance. Councilman Lawrence, how do you vote? Okay, yeah. That, the record reflects, is, 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 is,[1803.81] And some of our, um, historic institutions have actually received financial donations. And so these are unintended, but certainly positive consequences of the work that we've done, that people recognize the importance of our African-American heritage and our community, and ought to be a part of that. But, um, there is, if you look at, back to social media, one of the things that we plan to do this year, even though we do Instagram and Facebook, you're looking at Pinterest and, you know, how to open our webpage, how to popularize, what kind of content's gonna grow in it? And the thing about social media is, it's extremely labor-intensive. Each of these channels has, um, your own kind of set of followers, their audience. So we need to remain cognitive of, you know, who looks at what and why, and make sure that we're, you know, presenting ourselves in the best way possible. Um, back to the content, in the little review, it tells you some of the things our X-Step series kind of will continue to contest. Um, the gift I gave myself is, I'm gonna start writing a blog. I'd like to write, I'm going to write a big blog, and I'm gonna work all these hours, I'm gonna start working on a blog. Um, that'll also help especially with things like our, um, key search, uh, terms, that that's, with the constantly changing, um, algorithms, defining Google, you just have to keep that stuff current. Um, we have to finish our geo caching, and we'll continue with our wellness and, you know, reassuring people that the site is clean and safe and welcomes visitors. Um, we have done things that continue to promote family travels, uh, traveling in pods, which are like, you know, two groups together. When you're, um, family, like family travels together, kind of things smaller. And we're going to continue to support local and promote regional draws, both statewide and southeast. One of the things that we have done that most recently is, we have started a, a series with Married Persons High School Radio Station and five fast things. We talked about, uh, CDB, we talked about the bicentennial, we talked about the African-American Heritage, we have a whole series that we're continuing to work with them. And upstairs, upstairs, sorry, up on the square, um, we want to utilize, I know it's kind of steep, but we do feel like we're better. Anyhow, um, uh, we'll continue our positive messaging and utilizing that big window and, um, getting to know our community from a different perspective. And, um, just, you know, keep positive messaging going, and we just have great partnership with other agencies and community. And I think those things will continue, we'll continue to work together. And, um, probably the most important other thing I have to say is that, um, we have a new slave officer. And here's her, and Jim has been our chairman for the last couple of years, and she just stepped down from that. And I just want to publicly thank her for everything that she did for CDB, and continues to do for CDB. But she's been a very asset, and certainly to me personally, when I can recall on her, almost notice we sent her a text at, you know, ten o'clock on Sunday night, so she's, I just want to say thank you.
Well, thank you, and deal with, wish you all the work they are doing for CDB. Keep up the good work, any questions from the council? Alright, thank you so much for coming, and a good presentation as always, you know, a lot on how.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Alright, now we'll hear, uh, Economic Development Review from our Economic Development Director, Damian Pearson. Uh, you got a lot on that?
I think it's script today, I think it's.
Alright, it's, it's script.
Yeah, I have our presentation.
Oh. Can you say what you got?
Yeah.
I'm calling.
Yeah.
I'm telling, I'm awake, see, I'm awake here.
It's Dr. Houston.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm almost three, I'm excited.
I can, I can't say it, man. I'm not in the front of the slide.
Alright.
I got a real handsome.
Councilor Stroud, so probably here is.
I'll talk.
Alright, let's sit in that, alright, go ahead.
Okay, uh, this is my report for 2020. It does include things that are currently occurring, projects that are under construction and are in the permitting process. There could be some things that overlay from 2019 that go over to 2020, but you'll see that list. Um, what's economic development? To the best in growing the economy, enhancing the prosperity and quality of life for our residents. City of Sigh has seen a lot of growth in the last couple of years, and I believe that improving communities' quality are. In this report, I want to show you of your example of growth within the community and the work that is being done to make sure that our community continues to grow in a healthy way. I won't read it again to you, I'll just touch base. Um, I want to touch on the side, Main Street, the DDA, um, their, their vision statement. It's about allowing to be a part of Central Business District. Um, for these efforts, encourage retail and professional business growth by preserving our current quality of life. Part of that program is on the side, Main Street, um, grant, the saw and the sign grant. We awarded over sixteen thousand dollars in 2020, that was twelve grants. And you can see, uh, parking downtown of the increase that they've created, or the difference that happened in the new signage. We also received the rules on destination in 2020. Uh, that covers just the downtown area a couple of blocks. That is rehab, um, rehab, investment, and job creation, uh, tax credits. Um, if you buy these properties, unfortunately, a lot of our property that were bought in, um, 2019, um, cannot utilize, um, the investments that they can. I found that I'd utilize some of the rehab, the job creation. And so that would be good for some of the businesses that were renovated, um, downtown. Um, continue to work with businesses to promote and grow within the area. One of the things that we are doing, which will be on the next slide. The, um, first act we, uh, we want to promote, we can take that weekend to come shop local. The businesses are, um, um, co-promoting events, um, dining and eat, downtown, while we'll do our specials, and we'll do advertisement, we have office signs, we're picking up tomorrow. It'll be all around the square to remind people to shop, um, and visit local, uh, for Saturday. Um, something else that I've been working on ongoing is, I've been working with the ECG, uh, project retail manager, Michael Pecia, on several projects within the city. Um, he has created flyers for me, he creates marketing flyers. Um, so I connect with him on a regular basis. Um, he is always promoting for Sigh, um, there's some ideas, and so even though you may not see things happening right now, there are things that are happening behind the scenes, and, um, he's been a big, um, help to me and direct active. One thing, one thing I did want to touch on is that, um, I am also working with the, sorry, the Workforce Development Center, um, because I've had requests, um, for new businesses that are coming to town, is there any way to find, um, employees? And of course, I always aim to the workforce development and also to the high school, um, work-based program. But we did not have a central location where jobs can be posted. Of course, you have N D and online and individual, but the workforce development is there to help, um, people find jobs. And I thought it's important for us to offer a resource to help these businesses get employees. So they're going to work on adding a link to their website, to where businesses can post, um, current jobs, and then also give them the ability to help these people find jobs. They're going to, the ones that are going to be placed on their website is just going to be in Sigh in Monroe County. But of course, it'll continue to find jobs outside of that, if somebody's seeking something, but we're going to advertise just the room. Uh, this is a flyer, one of the flyers, two of the flyers that, um, Mr. Pecia did, and, um, he did the research on Esri, Esri Report, uh, for 2020. This is a marketing flyer to talk about demographics, um, traffic count, accessibility to the counter today, and how close the cars are before.
Which one? It's not in you.
Why?
Uh, well, I was gonna mention that we have all new businesses downtown, we have a spot that, um, disappeared. Uh, we had over thirty new business applications in 2020. And some of the new businesses we have downtown, Fox City Room Company, Soul Talkers in Tila, Earl and Good, and Maurice Overstores. Now, it's just a, you know, I'm gonna mention of the downtown area, okay? Um, call out all thirty applicants. Um, this brings us to the new, um, development projects in the city of Sigh, and you can see a list, some of the ones that occurred in 2020. A lot of those are ongoing, as far as Peach, Big Peach, Corrosion, um, the Laro Station, Town Creek, you know, those are still in construction phase, as well as Juliet Crossing, Phase One, Man of the Figure, Phase Two, um, Eagle Precast, um, they started there for, uh, Watch Bridge is already established. And then we have State Farm, American Craftsman, Quick Trip, um, hopefully that will be turning dark pretty soon. And we also have Park of Repair, it's gonna be renovating, um, the building behind the Ace Hardware in that corner. And, um, he came for a designer review, uh, last week, and he has, um, he's got a really nice building. Uh, of course, you know about Starlet, the Austin Parkway, the New Candyman Factory that we'll be talking about, the Industrial Park Drive, um, Juliet Crossing, Phase Two, we have a retail space, idea, uh, the Super Eight Hotel, and of course, um, the Rockford, uh, planning the zoning, uh, development, approximately eighty units in Industrial Park Drive. So those just are some of the things that have been happening in the last couple of years. There's sort of some lately still ongoing, ongoing as well, as you know about the Department of the French Market, that's a good space that's occurring. And then I just included some photos of things that have been developed and things that are being developed. Everybody knows the rules that they be. Crossing, bringing that brewing downtown. This is the Old Bill Market, they're doing some renovations on the outside, they'll be offering, uh, fresh produce and baked goods. I don't think that will be a really good gathering place, that's just off the square, there's Town Creek Center. Uh, that's a big, each of our wash. Juliet Crossing. And I just included, um, the clips from the Quick Trip and the Starlet. That pretty much kind of ends, um, the presentation. As, as you can see, the city of Sigh, if you work with the developers, city of Sigh attracts interest due to its location, interstate access, and its small-town charm. The person being that has created the capital may be working with the city more smoothly, has been working well. City of Sigh continues to draw interest, and the city of Sigh will be a great place to work, live and play. Thank you.
Very good, the developers, any questions from Mr. Pearson?
Keep up the good work. Glad to see you all.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson, all y'all are doing. It's been a Sunday morning, uh, seven thirty, and this is on my radio program, Magic One Hundred, where we talk more about Economic Development.
Yes, Steve Paul.
Alright, next item on the agenda is eighteen forty-three, Artist's Field, twenty-fourth Review, release class.
Hey, everybody. And I ask, if we could come and just kind of give you an update on how things are going. Um, the last time I was here is, believe it or not, twenty nineteen, when I came to present the idea of opening up an artist-in-field new gallery. Um, y'all were very supportive, and so I felt like y'all might be interested in how we're doing after our first full year of being in the, um, in the facility. And so, um, I just want to kind of start off, uh, talking about that we are constantly growing, we're constantly learning. Um, we are all, all of the members of the Artist's Field, um, are co-owners of what we did. We all have equal comments and votes and whatever, and so, and that's a little different from some of the other artists' fields that, um, are in the neighboring areas. Um, we do try to support one another and support our, and our community. We offer our members a unique experience. Um, we have members of our field who are also members of other fields, which we tend to kind of do. And one of the things that we have brought back to our field is information about what works now and what doesn't work now. How can we make ours better, or how can we improve, that type of thing? And, um, we have very unique experience because of our gallery situation, which is basically a retail outlet for a lot of artisans. Um, we represent anywhere from thirty to forty-five different artisans. And it would be almost impossible for each one of those artisans to have their own brick-and-mortar storefront. But together, we can present ourselves as an entity, and we are able to maintain what we have built so far. Um, this year, we, um, have a larger staff, volunteer field members. Um, we welcome memberships from artisans, because you don't have to be an artisan. We have a lot of supporters from our local area. So if anybody wants to support us, and you're not an artisan, we welcome, we welcome your dollars. Um, we have had a lot of interest, um, but one thing we found out is that we still have kind of been a wall built up that, that people, although they may be local, they don't realize what they can get locally. They don't realize about what we offer them. And so, um, we're kind of fighting a battle, um, trying to get the word out, trying to get people to know what we're doing. Um, and it's, it's coming along, but we're getting there, one, one person at a time. Um, our memberships, this year, um, we only have to rise, uh, our, the cost per membership by ten dollars this year. Um, we were surprised this gathered that we would actually have visitors from all over the country. Part of that is because of field is gone, but part of that's because we have the Welcome Center that they've done with us. And, um, actually, I think that's been kind of a great partnership for us, um, and for them, because, um, we have people that come in, that only can do the Welcome Center, and of course, we welcome them, we, you know, we want them, they can buy something, so it works great for us too. Um, and this is a fluid experience, when we started this, none of us knew exactly how it was gonna go. We kind of had an idea based on our experience in other galleries. But we aren't afraid to change, and we're not afraid to try something, and if it works great, then we'll try something else. We've had a lot of activities, the photographs during our basket weaving classes. Um, you know, the old joke about underwater basket weaving, when you ever load in a basket, you would not make that statement, because it is not easy, it is an all-day game. Um, we've had paintings where we're making basket weaving, leaf concrete, sculpture, acrylic painting, liberty. We've done some Christmas door hangers, Christmas ornaments. We actually, when we were in lockdown, like total lockdown, we had zoo paint classes, where we had a Saturday morning pajama paint class, where people would, um, come in and zoo, and, and I would instruct them on how to do a painting. We've had online special shopping events, uh, and we, of course, have participated in the shops on Saturday. This is some of Laura's pottery examples up here, that she's gonna be giving in a class for soon. We also co-sponsored these videos. And we offered a free ornament that he gave for youth around Christmas time. And everybody would show up, that's me, for some of the ice cream and videos. And that was pretty hard, we didn't charge anything for that. They gave a free ornament, they got to take with them. We have one show where the big corner shut down. We've had some sidewalk shows, we have silent auction, a raffle. And like I said before, we have works from approximately forty artisans. We have different people that are, that come in. This is a photograph from a couple of my paint classes. And you can see that we have all kinds of people that come. We have, it's always an interesting group that's there, it's always a lot of fun. And we have people that come from out of town. The last class I taught, I had a lady that came from Kennesaw, Georgia, just to come to my class. And I had posted on Facebook and promoted it. And she saw the ad, and she said, why not? Not do anything, it's a Saturday, y'all wanna get out of the house? And she came down and kept going to classes. So that was pretty, I was, I was pretty amazed. Okay, so Lori's been talking to us about financial support.
And as they talk, I was sorry, I feel real strong with our show, Things We Love. And then, of course, COVID getting shut down. But we ended the year with a sales of twenty-two thousand nine forty-one. Artisans at that twenty-two thousand, they're probably fifteen thousand nine seventy-nine. The biggest thing that we get out of the field, and all people mind, was our Christmas ornament for our year, we got three hundred and two dollars off of that. For the field, the monthly expenses, which are Ram, Interim, that kind of thing, were six hundred and twenty-six dollars and twenty-nine cents. And then we, we ended the year with a balance, a good balance of that, about eight hundred and ninety dollars. That was all the fundraisers that we were able to have, the sales. We take fifteen percent of the gallery sales from the artisan to help pay the Ram, pay the expenses, and then the field sales. And if we get back to field, we'll do the money, back straight to the field. So, and then our class, it was a special call, it was a lot of that. And then, based on January, February, the sales we have for 2021, are predicted to gross sales to be fifty-six thousand nine ninety-one for 2021. So, artists have a bigger number than that, but that's predicted. That's based on January, February of this year.
Okay, so future plans, because we're always planning, we're artists, we do tend to do that, we're creators. Our future plans, one, we want to, of course, try to host more shows. We're constantly adding classes. There's a big need locally for that, there's a big request locally for that. I can't tell you how many grandmothers that called me up and said, my grandfathers are coming for the spring break, what can they do with them? That kind of thing. So we took to add some classes that would kind of fit that. We wanted to sponsor some combined arts events. Like, for example, we had a hike that Lynn Watson took on at Indian Springs. We had a plant, air, water climb hike. We're gonna have a sidewalk show based on walks from that. But we also want to work more with local students from the high schools than from the home schools, to be able to have some, get some more student, young people interest. We want to continue, of course, working with city groups, the EIC, the city councils, and foster our and our community. We want to encourage more members to volunteer more hours, take more classes. The need is so great for that, that it's honest that we can't meet the demand. And so it's, it's something that we're constantly working to expand on. And of course, we want to expand our membership with artisans and patrons through special events. And we want to get more youth involved. We're gonna work with the bicentennial group, work with the Artisan Fair. And we want to have a special show during the bicentennial, highlighting generations of artists, promoter family that influence that every year. Now, this is one of our youth artisans. She actually came and taught a Valentine Day break class. She's fourteen, her name is Inira. So, great needs, what do we need from y'all? Well, y'all are giving us y'all's support, and we definitely appreciate that. Y'all come in and give us a little bit of your heart and then you certainly appreciate that, too. But one thing that we really need is a sign. Because although people are finding out slowly and surely where we are, because normally it's hoops, and we round and pull them inside, we really need some kind of signage other than what we have. We do ask that you might consider, let's place some sort of sign beside the building. We can get our sons to make sign for us. And definitely, we would work within whatever kind of signer walls there are that this team comes up with. Something like this, for example, something kind of simple. You'll notice that this is center over on the left-hand side. It's not the center part, because you realize there's a right-hand side. And so there might be something that might come along that would be on the right-hand side. So this is just an example of, and I think this isn't exactly what we necessarily have to have. This is just an example of what I'd like people to like. We want to thank y'all once again for your support. And if you have any questions that we can answer, or...
Do you have regular hours that you open?
We're open almost every single day. At some time, on our door, we have sign that has a number that says, we're open Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday, from eleven until about four. Because we can't sell things if we're not open.
Wow, that's true.
And one thing going back to the fact that we never know what's gonna happen, I learned what medical tourism is in it.
You might know what medical tourism is? Y'all know our, yeah.
That's weird. That's my question.
Well, you know, Forsyth has become a medical tourism spot. People going to get their COVID shots from...
Columbus?
From Columbus, Georgia to Madison, Georgia. Go right through Forsyth, and guess what? It's not on elsewhere.
Oh, come here, Forsyth.
Absolutely. And so we're becoming a tourist spot, a called a medical tourism, which I learned about two weeks ago. And the lovely couple spent a nice chunk of time with us. So I was very happy to see them. But a sign would be helpful. So we do, we would like y'all at least consider that.
Thank you.
Thank you, very good report, all good reports, all good. All right, next, we have approval of the change order number five for Peloton Construction.
You should have a copy of the change order in your packet. This is change order number five for the total of $6,479. Unfortunately, the fire hydrant associated with the sprinkler system that we are requiring on the back of the building, the fire hydrant was left off of the plan. And so this is simply to add the fire hydrant. When the plumber was running the line in Chamber Street, he went ahead and put the tee in to install the fire hydrant. But this, this is just to add that fire hydrant as a requirement, and somehow it got left off of the, the plan.
Somehow, change order number three is involved in the meeting. All right, is there a motion from the... Question by Council of New York, that's a second, not a third. That must have sucked in this question. All right, here you go, it's just one, all motion, all taken. Questions carried unanimously, it's all approved. Next item on the business, approval of the power of policy update. Uh, Officer Lynn, four.
Good afternoon, everybody. Continuing to go into our policies and updating the current case of all the issues and so forth. I'm also trying to take care of each and all the abilities you may arise. One thing that I came across in our policy, was we did have a fire policy about what they would do through your, to carry a firearm. Uh, depending, they didn't have them along with them. However, there is no specific structure on how the training or qualification would occur. For the state of Georgia to be a certified peace officer to impose, all day, all night departments, you have to qualify with whatever weapon you carry. They do assign a course of fire, or we have to follow. Other than that, procedure that we go through to get there is up into the penalty agency. Not that we had a problem with us, I don't want to put that out there, but actually, a problem with other agencies, which causes, as most of you all know, work for the train center at the time. And also, there are a lot of used enforcement apparatuses, private agencies and organizations, there are officers of all uses, of course. And to put us into what I believe would be a structure that protects not only mainly the officer, but also the city and department. Because ultimately, if an officer is qualified to carry a firearm, he or she would be okay in order to do it. However, if the city or the department showed any kind of negative protection aspect, it could be some sort of civil liability there. So mainly, I'm gonna see how I have here. I highlighted, you know, the addition that we put in this policy, I put this policy. Basically, what I did, it was by actually just kind of play a structure of course of fire, specifically what our officers require to do. Also, how it's going to be structured and so forth. So I created a new subsection B, that was page two. At the final stand, I'm gonna read it over to the man in front of you. But basically, what has years been, where officers be certified for the City of Forsyth, not the state of Georgia, for the City of Forsyth to be employed to us. The firearms publication course has to be conducted either by a firearm instructor that's employed by Forsyth Police Department, which I have a couple. Either certified firearm instructor that I get from the train center to the forest. Or either myself, who be present, there's the witness. If another agency comes to you, I know it's going to hurt your center here. The call of the issues we had, so we got basically full staff here related. We had to build a more counting pass, more counting qualifies there. If we had to do another some instances like that, and I would do it with a group of more counting, and I will reserve the more counting firearm instructor qualified our officers to go in their way. Or even armor, or even all, or even there, you can go. The course of fire, anytime we go out and qualify, I would consume of what consisted of basically one common policy practice round. That is not counted as a practice fail, is to re-apply them to the course of fire. And after that, they actually had three times to qualify. And if they qualify on the first time, well, they're finished and they're good. Things do happen, weapons jam, misfires, and so forth. So these things are our times, if you can't get the rounds that you need, you only have a minimum of three for a maximum of three times you can have to qualify. Because the officer cannot qualify at least once in the three actual qualification rounds. To protect us, because at that point, you've had an issue with an officer that's not able to use a weapon in a satisfactory manner. What would happen at that point, they would not be able to function as a peace officer until they did qualify. So to protect us, the rest will be turned into a duty weapon. They will not be able to drive a more vehicle, if they take a car or anything like that. And they would have a five-day period, this is why I can't deal with because it could be a possible HR issue here from this far. They'd have a five-day period, they would not be able to function as a peace officer, because we don't have light duty, unfortunately. A lot of agencies have this, they can put them behind a desk, into a phone, if we don't have that function that we are. During that five-day period, they will be in a situation where we can put them through some remedial training. But also to, and you can take annual leave during that time, they would be paid for to take the leave, it's going to be a dishears expression and that. And then afterward, they can come back and get another chance to qualify again. If they can qualify at the same time, that's basically, that's six times, basically, to try to make the course of fire. And at that point, when we get to achieve this expression, whether or not to allow more practice rounds, or the officer could actually do a termination. And that's where the fact is, let her have to fill the duties along for the officer, whether it was ultimately our greatest weapon that you're gonna save the world on. Because as the Supreme Court said, anytime you kill someone, that's the ultimate seizure, and it proceeds to that. So if you want to do it, you need to know how to do it, and do it properly. What happened to this as well, because even if it has actual force way out, it is an operator, a pending say, is a blast of the law here. The reason for that is, if the call of the post comes in in the future and decides to change the qualification round, we don't have to change the whole policy, we just have to change the defendants. So it's just going to be a matter of change at that point. But you'll see there, I won't actually go through with the other questions. We want to have you answer the pending say, basically, after the course of fire, after the type of targets that will be used, and what equipment's required and so forth. And examples of how many rounds of fire are shown by the yard line. The call went in three, all right, so.
Very good, very well. All right, is there a question to approve?
So, no.
Question by Council of New York, that's a second. Second, by Council of Dog, I'm gonna get questions for, if there's any discussion, and also, if there's any to answer the questions that they have. Here you are, all the questions, all taken. Regular flag, us preparing, you have a say, so approve.
I have one.
What do you serve, again?
Officer. What less than legal option do we have?
Well, come on, mine did, options, if the state statue, if you don't recognize those, we would have that, OC spray, taser and tine. Everything's outside, of course, hand on control. Now, we got a four, a form of the, if we use first, if we land, you should not. The reason for that is, and I know your history, there's one of them, and it put it off of it. And I've been thirty years going this amount. When I came up there, it was a force attempt. But basically, it took a picture that said, Art, you have this, do this. And how about staircase, we gave the image of the thought process, you have to do this, do this. You can't go here, you have to, and you school if you go up here. Just skip anything, it's called exclusion, the whole dinner. Well, the Supreme Court gave examples, one, kind of allotted to the, oh, guy that did the Hustle magazine, and the forum question came up back in sixty-eight. One of the judges said, I don't know what floor it is, but I know when I see it, it was kind of painted by used enforcement, it was reasonable. They actually said, it's not precise, this is their phrase, mechanical definition for it. So the best to set that picture was obviously. So what they said, basically, is that you've got two force options. One is being non-deddy, one is deadly. Non-deddy, now, individual agencies may put some force situation on it. But if you use the taser, that's considered non-deddy. You can also use the tie, the city hands over there. It's not legal to do any of those things, because deadly force would be your option. It's not going to be the force, then all the non-deddy options would be free. And I've seen some agencies who put it as you have to, you have to retake, you have to spray, you have to taser, or any of that. But we don't have that now, because the officer carries, carries peace of non-deddy. Uh, but in Manhattan, it's up to officer discretion. Only thing we have, if you do carry it, you have to qualify. If you carry a taser, you qualify a taser, if you carry a spray, you qualify a spray. Some carry all of it.
Well, pretty much, yeah, right there. All right.
Most people do carry tongs, most people do carry tongs. The, I'm gonna tell you, and the good fact, a lot of officers reference, and also, the OC spray, the cleanup on that is extreme. And I'm gonna tell you, I've been exposed in several, on that, because the last quarter, he was gonna spray me two times. Where taser and the tine is more contained. So in that case, right there, OC spray has its purpose and place, but a lot of the officers just don't carry that, they go with the tine, the taser. They, it'll give you some sort of reaction or gap, if you go with it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, all right. We will move on to the fourth panel, we want to see an attitude report.
Yes, sir, thank you. I hope that you've had a chance to review the report that I sent to you. I will not go through all of those items that are listed there unless someone has some questions. I would like to hit some... I would like to hit some items that will be coming up at future meetings. I do hope that you enjoyed and that you appreciated the work that was put into the presentations that you had tonight. Moved Tammy and Denise to tonight's meeting, so that, well, we were hoping that then Tammy would not have to come to the next meeting, but unfortunately, we have public hearings and such on the next meeting as well. But just to kind of spread those out, so that you can pay attention and learn the good things that happened in 2020, and that is, the whole objective is to let you know those accomplishments that we did have in 2020. And so the rest of the department heads will come and make their presentations at the March 15th meeting, and that will also include the first report from the code enforcement officer, and then he will be coming on a quarterly basis. I've also received a request from the Chamber of Commerce, remember when you held the called meeting, and they asked to come back at the first meeting in April? They called last week and asked if it would be okay if they came to the second meeting in March. I went back, looked at the minutes, and that was not included in the motion, it just said that they would come back at a later date. And so they will be coming back to the March 15th meeting as well, to ask you to reconsider the street closings for the Persia Festival. Just to highlight the public hearings that are coming up, March the 15th at 5:30, there will be a public hearing that is not part of the council meeting, but that will be before the council meeting. This is a public hearing to provide information and receive citizen comments on the amendment to the Forsyth Community Work Program. And then during the council meeting, we will have the hearing for the citizen input on the CDBG application for the water lines in Jackson Heights subdivision, and I will call attention to the fact that we did have yet another issue with the water in that area on this past Friday. April the 5th council meeting, we will have Mr. Houston Builder, Edgar Houston Builder, that was here tonight, he is scheduled to come to do his request for sidewalk on one side in Juliet Commons. The IDP will be coming for their rezoning from manufacturing industrial to highway business with a 24-month conditional use for multifamily complex. And then the public service data will be here for the request for their sign variance for an internally illuminated sign at their new location, and then the panhandling draft ordinance, I saw this afternoon where an ad came, and that's for April 5th meeting as well. So we'll have that public hearing as well. So we've got several more public hearings that will be coming before you for developments that are going on, and that is all of the report, unless anyone had any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Dooley, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Hey, so I have a question to comment. Hey, I do so to understand what Mr. McGoldsky's intent was about Forsyth, with the Chili's, congratulations to them, number one. You know, I think, I think that it does help us to celebrate our accomplishments in our community, so just whatever we can do to, to celebrate not only them, but anybody else who has a major accomplishment, I don't know what the right name is, because we can have a long-running sign up there, but, you know, I don't want anybody to think that fell off the empty here, congratulations to them, but my question is, what pushes this panhandling ordinance? I know we've talked about it before, I've seen people outside of the Walmart, I think it's also Parkway, but not, but not too awful. I don't see us having a bad panhandling problem, make stuff go on holiday season. Is there something pushing it, or what?
It's actually come from our police department, because they've had several issues, and we do not have an ordinance that covers the issues that they are having, and so I asked them to check with other agencies and put together what would help them with the issue that they're having, and this is the ordinance that they brought back.
Much like the mask ordinance, is this something that we're going to enforce?
I would hope so, especially since it's something that is coming from them, saying that this is something, that this is an issue that they're having, that they need help to be able to handle, so I would, I would hope that they would not ask for an ordinance to be written and then not enforce it.
Okay, thank you.
Can I say something? Yeah, Officer Corvus, yeah, because I was part of it too. In areas where we're getting enforcement, you know, and just private property, if we can enforce it there, which can, if the owner of the business wants to leave, and develop, of course, that's the whole condition. We're in a situation, one area, but maybe in the roadway, blocking traffic, you see a lot of time where the leave the sidewalk, and you want to the street, you know, windows that go back, so those things like that, if you know, the safety hazard of them, and so forth, and those things, you don't want to enforce. And private property, you don't get the owner of that, so.
All right, thank Officer Corvus. All right, any other questions? All right, City Attorney Report?
The notices that Ms. Hall just read to you, or just talked to you, man, are ones I had now for my report. If there's any questions about any of those, they'll all be advertised for April 5th, partially because of the zoning and variance issues, they have to be advertised certain amounts of times, there's no way to get it done before the second meeting this month. The panhandling ordinance will be coming up too, that carries enforcement penalties with it. Now, that's sixty, you know, six months or a thousand dollars is a potential penalty for what essentially is a type of harassment of somebody coming up, if you're trying to use an ATM and asking for money. I don't know what the, how many events of that have happened around here, but I don't have any objection to that, I think it's a good idea to have that on the books, and that'll come up later. So that's a.
Yeah, I thought the same thing about the mask. That would have been a good thing to keep on the books too, but we didn't enforce that, so just make sure that we do enforce panhandling, if it's on the book.
Yeah. It's kind of difficult to enforce mask penalties right now, since everybody's wearing a mask, but I understand what you're saying.
All right, any questions for the City Attorney? All right, we will look to my report, I just want to tell you, you know, Forsyth is the place to be right now, it's got a lot of exciting stuff going on, you heard the reports tonight, first from the conviction district bureau, then you heard from the economic development department, then you heard from the arson guild, there's a lot of exciting things going on in Forsyth. Now, and for mayor, I can't blame you on economic development, this council embraces economic development, has worked hard to foster an environment, and let me say that we don't make the decisions, there's people who invest money in this community, who invest their power and energy and talents in opening these businesses, and we appreciate what they do for the community. We've experienced a lot of growth, and we will continue to experience a lot of growth, because we are an united city, we have an economic development directive, we do a right job, we've got something to discuss, a position this council saw that we reported, and we came with the idea, a first step, which is great money for businesses, either new or existing, to connect with the city government, and it shows that the city is open for business, so I'm just so excited about what we've got going on. New businesses do a lot for the community, they create jobs, they pay new, in cases, they buy utilities, and in which the city sells, so they're the closest to the city and to the community when new businesses come. One of the things I often hear is, why a certain business didn't come, why this one came, that one didn't come. We don't make those decisions, but what we do is create an environment where if somebody wants to come to Forsyth, if it makes sense, if we have the population going, if we have the gentile levels that support, then we work with them to help them go, and Forsyth is enjoying a lot of success at this time, and we really appreciate this council for their leadership, and we continue to talk about economic development in our planning retreat this year, I appreciate this Pearson and her role, I appreciate us all, her leadership, because there are a lot of leaving parts with any of these projects that we work with, and how it will work with our infrastructure, and that's another area that's reported. And this council has committed to about $29 million in water and sewer infrastructure upgrades, and that is, that is something that most people don't see, but we all use, and you have to have it, you have to have it for the residents here, you have to have it for businesses. Now, I like what this Pearson talked about, work, litter, and play, because we also have committed to do about $5 million in upgrades to our parks, and that includes the amphitheaters, the government basketball court, its family walking trails, improvements at kind of F Park, improvements at all the parks in the city. And I've always said that those things work in concert, you have to have community development to enjoy economic development, and you have all the right pieces in place, and people want to be a part of the community. And you see that housing is expanding too, of what will happen with the community, we'll do subdivisions and expansions that are existing subdivisions. But I guess I'm just excited, you know, for what's going on in Forsyth, and I just wanted to say that as your mayor, I'm very proud of what's going on, I'm very proud of our city government, I'm very proud of those citizens who invest in our community, and I just want to call Bill, thank Bill as well for perfecting that step, especially in this uncertain climate we're in. I don't think the square is, has been this full in my history with Forsyth, I've never seen it this full and vibrant, with businesses, and I get out off available Friday or Saturday nights, and it's just, it's full, but it's not only the square, it's the whole town, right by the interstate, and the businesses were both out there as well, so just a lot of positive things going on, and I'm very excited to see, and I just want to highlight that, and I thank you, Sir Corvus, I did interview Tammy for my monthly radio program, she's on Mad 100, following the reporter, I think, y'all at seven, right? I'm at 7:30.
We're not, we're not wrong here, the radio.
Y'all do, y'all go on the TV, I think, yeah. All right, so, I think I'm at 7:30, were y'all at seven when you were on the radio?
We take it, I think, I think I might put it on at seven.
I think I'm 7:30, so I want to get that correct, I knew it in reference, I knew I followed the reporter, but, all right, so 7:30, tune in, and you can hear more talk about all the ability to help develop the efforts and businesses that are going on in the city. All right, any questions for me, that's, that's all I have.
I have two questions, Ms. Hall. How is our water and sewer showing up with our latest businesses coming on?
We seem to be doing fine. No, no issues that Craig has brought forward.
Another point, if you can give me time to break this up, something else. Another point that you were talking about today, you know, we made the conscious decision a few years ago to build a new city hall, and one of the main differences for that was to get off of the square, creating opportunities for business, for retail business to be on the square. And not long after we made that decision, before we even really had a good plan together, students came along and wanted to rent that space. I think everybody would agree, they've been a great additions to the square, and they highlighted the fact that the arson guild is here tonight, and they're occupying another part of that building, think about the higher and better use of those buildings on the square, and we're going to create some parking a block off the square, 38 parking spots, along with the new city hall. So I ran into somebody down the road that's parked a block off the square, and said, we need to create more parking, I have to park over here. I said, well, what building are we going to carry down to create the parking? There are only one block away from the square, you gotta, you gotta have the space somewhere to create more parking. So, anyway, that's all, my so thoughts. Thank you for consulting, any questions?
Let me give Mr. Hewitt a better answer than what I did. We had or have excess water and sewer capacity, and so we, we are not near our, our capacity right now, we are getting into the 70% to 80% capacity usage, that's why we're doing the, the project to rehab those, those plants, but we, we have excess capacity for water and sewer.
There you go. All right, Mr. Mayor, how far have you been here in the one?
All right, how in the thirty minutes here, in the morning? Any other council board reports, is that yours?
That is not.
All right, any other council board reports for the evening?
Yes, sir, CDB has finally got all of our officers elected for 2021 out. Your truly is the chairperson for CDB, with Helen Walker serving as vice chair, and Dennis Kent as president, but we, we may end up needing to build some spots, but I won't discuss that, if you all have that time.
All right, thank you, Mr. Howell. Anybody else with council board reports? All right, here you go, we'll move on to additional business, any additional business that comes before the council?
Hey, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I have a question.
Yes.
Hey, so I, I noticed in the, in the reporter, that it talks about the apartment conflict by Shawn. Number one, I didn't like the fact that I had found out about it through the reporter, and may, and maybe it was in an email or something like this, but I just didn't like finding out about it through the reporter. Matter of fact, I did find out about it through the reporter, I had a county commissioner to call me, ask me about where, before it happened, but are we going to discuss this even more as far as the development of it, what role do we play in the development of that apartment conflict? That's, that's my question.
Now, if it comes before planning and zoning, that, that would have to be advertised, and they would have to come before the city council, for any pilot, the city.
That's one of the things that was already mentioned, it's coming up on the April 15th meeting.
It's all that, Ms. Hall went out for the April 5th meeting.
It's a rezoning from MI to.
Highway business.
Highway business, business with a conditional use for a development of multifamily units there. It's about 78 acres in the development.
That's the one on here, Council, ground is listed as a favor to development partners on the readout from this hall.
That's right.
Okay.
And I think it was included, was it included in the email?
I believe so, I can look back and see.
Yeah, it, it was an email, I think my fault was, you know, finding out secondhand from a county commissioner, and then finding out, getting to the reporter, and people asking about it, I was like, I don't know anything about the apartment conflict development. So, you know, I guess, I guess you know just as much as anybody else knows about it. It's something we have a lot of, I mean, just say we should do a good communication with projects like that.
Okay, all right. Any other additional business?
Well, I've got one question, and I don't mean to drag this out, but I, I just see that, I see the county has made some traction in with the water progress, I did that at Juliet, and I see that they've come to a halt, as the way I understand it, but is there any indication that they're going with far, who they're going to allow supply of water, is it going to be making water party again, and I tax dollars to continue going to make it, or are they even going to come to the table and talk to us about?
That's, that's a question I can answer.
I didn't think you could, I just put it out there. I don't believe anybody can admit for.
Love nowhere.
I'm sure, and that's why I asked, we, we would all love to know. That's all I ask.
Thank you, Council. All right, any other additional business? Not, we'll lose the public comments, anyone from the public who's in the comments, they did so at this time, now, four minutes, we've come to the council, the name of that, and that's for the record. So the public comments is now open, now, in all comments. Okay, so you guys have no interest in the public comments at this time, and it will bear that the county's going to make decisions to discuss personnel matters, heavy litigation, and land acquisitions, lease, or sale. Is there a motion to go into executive session for those areas? Motion by Councilman Dodd, same as I cast Hewitt, all in favor? Councilman Lawrence, what's your opinion down there, will that one be to executive session, thank you, Officer Jordan?